Ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene the regular meeting of the Orient Township Board of Trustees at 7:03 PM. We had a closed session to listen to an attorney opinion upstairs. Welcome everyone to beautiful, warm March in Orient Township. We're living as a vacation. We're glad you're here. If you could silence your cellphone, that would help us stay focused up here. And I will try to keep things on the screen that we are looking at. You can also follow along on your phone or your tablet if you have it here because we, everything that we see, you can see. With that, we always start our meetings with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, Clerk Schultz, we are joined by...
Pastor Todd Dever with Lake Orient Church of Christ.
Thank you Pastor Dever. If you could join us, if you'd all stand and stay standing through the pledge, please.
That is great. Father in heaven, we are humbled by the privilege of entering into your presence this evening through the name of your son, Jesus. Lord, we acknowledge our complete dependence upon you. We are weak, but you are mighty. We are limited in understanding, but you are infinite in wisdom and knowledge. So, Lord, we ask tonight that you will impart your wisdom to these board members, guide them in the decisions that they make, and help them to lead us in the way that you want us to go. We ask that you will protect us from the enemy and deliver us from evil. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to recognize the efforts of, just for our recognition, we always kind of have some good news on the front end. We had some of our firefighting team participate in the 2019 Fight for Air Climb. This is for the American Lung Association. So this is the team. You can see, I just want to, they were, they were awesome. Our quickest climber was David Welch. This is second from the right there. But you can see there we have Brian Hearn's and Todd Jacobs and Paige and Derek and Chris Hagan. So just some pictures of them completing the climb. I did this a couple of years ago and I'll never do it again. I thought I was going to die. It was terrible. So, the cool thing is, is they raised a lot of money. If you go to the, the other cool thing is if you go to the actual, the official page, if I can find my mouse, of the, of the climb for American Lung Association, the official page promoting the event shows our team from last year, which is pretty cool. So, thousands of people, you can see they raised $260,000. Great event. So congratulations to the men and lady of the Orient Township Fire Department that represented us well down in Detroit last Sunday. We also had the Fireman's Ball, but I'll mention that and show some pictures in my comments at the end. And with that, we have a proclamation tonight and then a presentation. And the proclamation, is Tammy Freeman here by chance? No, okay. So Tammy, if I could be wrong, I don't want to get this wrong, but she, she definitely is an employer of the district, of the school district, and I believe it's her daughter that is fighting this rare disease, Neuromyelitis Optica. I'm going to call it NMO. And we do these proclamations from time to time, and this one is very special to them and their family because we're trying to bring awareness to this very rare disease that one of our own is suffering from. So, whereas NMO is a rare and relatively unknown autoimmune, autoimmune disease that currently has no cure, and whereas NMO attacks the central nervous system and can cause permanent disability, including blindness and paralysis, and whereas the cause of NMO is still a mystery and there are currently no FDA-approved treatments, whereas when mistaken for other diseases, treatments can exacerbate NMO symptoms, and whereas increased awareness of the disease has allowed doctors to become more likely to recognize the varying manifestations of the disease, and whereas the NMO community is dedicated to increasing the awareness and understanding about the disease in order to promote research, improve patient care and outcomes so that they may, that a cure may ultimately be found. Now therefore, I, Chris Barnett, Supervisor of the Charter Township of Orient, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as NMO Awareness Month in the Charter Township of Orient. So if you don't know what that is, which I didn't until we were, Ms. Freeman reached out and asked us if we would do this, can't imagine having someone that you love go through this. And we have a beautiful young girl, I believe, that's fighting this disease. So, if you do nothing else, Google it, look, look at it, and the more awareness that could be brought might just help some people in our community. So thank you for, for that, and the best wishes to Ms. Freeman. Also tonight, we have a presentation from the Oakland County Youth Mobile Crisis Team. Are you here tonight? Yes. I didn't, I don't, I don't have the right clicker, so if you just tell me when to advance your slides, I will promise I'll do a really good job. It's not the right one. I couldn't get it to work.
Okay, I'll try to give you like a thumbs up.
So thank you for being here. If you want to introduce yourself to the board and the public, and then I have your presentation here.
Okay, absolutely. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Zalone, and I work for Oakland Community Health Network. I'm a social worker and also a project coordinator, so I'm very happy to share with the Orient Township Board of Trustees on this new mobile crisis service, and also to be able to share it with the public. We have quite a bit, number of community members, so I'm really excited to be able to share this new service. But I work for Oakland Community Health Network, and you may not be familiar with our new name, but we are formerly Oakland County Community Mental Health Authority. So we are the community mental health system in the county, and we, we split from the county in 1999, but we still work very closely with them on justice initiatives. We work with the community hospitals, so we're very much in partnership with the county even though we are separated. I'll give you a little thumbs up to go to the next slide.
Okay, yes.
Okay, but we are the public mental health system for Oakland County. Every single county within the state has a community public, community mental health public system, and what we do is we provide specialty mental health services for individuals and adults with a serious mental illness, with children with a serious emotional disturbance, also services for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities, also infant mental health services, and also substance recovery supports as well. So we do a lot of great work in the community. And we do so with a contracted network of providers. We have Common Ground. Some community members may be familiar with them. There are Crisis Center, which is located in Pontiac, right on the county campus. They're one of our crisis providers. It's open 24 hours a day. Our newest crisis provider is New Oakland Family Centers, and that's who we partnered with to be able to provide this mobile crisis service. Then we work through a few other contracted providers for children, adults as well, so Oakland Family Services, Easter Seals, Morck CLS, CNS Healthcare, and also Training and Treatment Innovations. So I wanted to talk about the Children's Mobile Crisis Unit, and we coined it Oakland County Youth Mobile Crisis Team. And as I mentioned, we partnered with New Oakland Family Centers to be able to provide this service. They work in many counties throughout the state, and because they provide a lot of behavioral health supports, they also have a partial day program. They're located in McComb, Wayne, Washtenaw, in the Lansing area. So they're really branching out, and we are familiar with them because they provided this service in Wayne County as well. And so this is a state initiative. Now every county in the state of Michigan is required to have this specialty mobile crisis team for children, youth, and young adults as well. So even though it's a youth mobile service, it goes for anyone zero to 21 years of age in obviously our county and then other counties as well. And this was a state mandate led by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the reason being is that they wanted to find and develop a support that would help children, youth, and young adults stay in the community when they're dealing with a crisis. So what happens when individuals typically have a crisis? Sometimes they're calling a police department. Sometimes they're going to the ER. Sometimes they're going to Common Ground, and they may be going to an inpatient hospitalization or a partial day program. What this service is really aimed to do is be able to go out into the community and provide those intensive supports, but then trying to keep individuals in the community when it's appropriate. Sometimes individuals do need a little bit more support and care, so in those instances, a partial day program or an inpatient hospitalization is needed, but absolutely want to try to keep children, youth, and young adults in the community when appropriate. As I mentioned, the service is available for anyone in the county, zero to 21, because we are funded by Medicaid dollars, our CMH system. Individuals to be able to have the mobile support need to have Medicaid, be Medicaid eligible, or for those that are uninsured as well. Now, we would love to branch this out and have it be available to anyone in the public in the county regardless of insurance. There are ways to do that. I know Washtenaw County, they actually passed a millage to be able to raise additional funding to be able to have that, but the state didn't provide any additional funding to be able to do this, and so our community mental health system had to look at our budget and be able to set aside dollars to fund this service.
Let me get the, one more? Sorry.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Actually, you know what? I think we need to go back to the slide.
That's what I thought. Sorry about that.
It's okay. So as I mentioned, we partner with New Oakland Family Centers, but what this service does is be able to allow to, the team to go out in the community and provide a rapid mobile response. So they have to make it, if they do deploy out to the community, if a family member calls, a caregiver calls, and the team goes out, they have to make it to wherever the youth or family is within 60 minutes. They've been very successful apart from some of the seasonal changes and winter as it, as it is in Michigan, but they are very successful in meeting that timeframe. But when the team goes out, they always go out with a master's level clinician and also a social work technician. So they go on a team of two, and they go out practically anywhere in the community, and they're providing that on-the-spot crisis intervention and de-escalation, and then they'll also do a clinical assessment. Should the individual, and they're going to be assessing, should the individual go to the hospital? Do they need a higher level of care? And so they're doing all that assessment and coordination when they're there in the home. The service is not currently 24 hours. We're really looking to see when these crises typically occur, and from what we've gathered from Common Ground data and what we know in the county, usually these crisis situations usually happen after school, in the evenings, and usually it cuts off at about 10, but we're looking to expand based upon community need as well. So where can they go in the community? They can go to homes, they can go to foster care homes. Youth that are in the foster care system or in the child welfare system are very vulnerable. Some of these children that the team is going out on have had more than 20 placements. So they've, so the service is really beneficial because we want to try to keep children in their current placement, and so it's very valuable to youth that may have more crisis situations. But they can go to emergency departments. We're having ER, social workers call this team when they need help assessing children and youth. They can go to community locations. We've partnered with Oakland University. I've also been out to Oakland community colleges because it does capture the young adults in our community as well, so we want to make sure that our community is well aware of this service. So parks, stores, wherever a crisis situation may occur, they're able to go to. So where are they not able to go? And this is per MDHHS regulations. They're not able to go to daycare centers, child caring institutions, so those licensed places. They're not able to go to residential centers. Once an individual is in an inpatient setting, whether it's on a medical floor or psychiatric floor, they're not able to go there. And then detention centers or jails, so they're not able to go to Children's Village in Oakland County as well as the jail for that young adult population. So when potentially would a family member, caregiver, a guardian, a foster parent call the mobile crisis line? And why would they want a team to be able to come out to their home? Things such as a youth, young adult experiencing any type of crisis, but property destruction, physical aggression, maybe threatening behaviors to harm themselves, a parent, a sibling, someone else that they're living with, whether it's a loss of coping skills or maybe impulsive decision-making, self-harm, suicidal thoughts, or maybe some depression, anxiety, and the individual socially isolating. So any of those situations, the team is very well-versed. They're experienced, they're trained clinicians, so they are experienced in being able to handle a wide range of crisis situations. But it doesn't have to be one of these situations. It can be anything when an individual is experiencing a mental health crisis. And what are the goals of providing this service? Well ultimately, just to try to de-escalate what's ever going on in the home and with the individual. So really being able to restore emotional and behavioral functioning with the individual. That's the main goal of the service, but then also reduce the need for inpatient hospitalizations, reduce out-of-home placements, also help justice diversion, so whether it be a criminal diversion or a youth diversion. Sometimes individuals are calling officers, and they're not necessarily well-versed in crisis intervention. And then ultimately, if the individual doesn't have ongoing supports, it's really to be able to connect them with an ongoing mental health provider for counseling, treatment, parent supports, youth peer supports, whatever the individual needs. And then making the call. So what happens when an individual calls? The clinician will answer the phone. It doesn't go through a dispatch, so you have a master's level clinician that's answering that line and asking, well, what's going on in the home? What's going on with the individual? Has the individual tried calling? Maybe if they're working with a clinician or a therapist. What have you tried? Did they have a crisis plan and trying to work through those steps? Ultimately seeing if there's any safety issues. Do they need to get 911 on the line right away? And then ultimately, they're going to provide some phone counseling and then decide if they're going to deploy out into the community or not. And so when they do go out, they have to make it there within 60 minutes, as I shared. But then when the mental health professionals go out, they have the social work technician and the clinician that works together to be able to support that individual and family, and then ultimately decide based upon the crisis intervention assessment, whatever that individual needs, so the coordination of care is there. And who can call? Absolutely anyone in the community can call this mobile crisis service. Could be the individual in a crisis, or it can be a parent, caregiver, guardian, foster parent, social worker, hospital worker, anyone in the community can call. If a youth calls or a minor, obviously they're going to want to get on the line with the parent, connect, and ask, you know, do you know what's going on with your child? Are you aware? And then they're going to want to be able to have some consent to be able to deploy out if that individual is a minor in the community. So here is the number for anyone that wants to reach the Youth Mobile Crisis Line, and that's 877-816-50. This is New Oakland's crisis line, so it is open 24 hours. This is the line that Wayne County uses as well because they're the same provider of this service in Wayne County and then in Oakland County as well. And then are there any questions?
Just real fast.
Okay.
Make sure I didn't miss it here. You can work with our school systems and our Sheriff's Department and things like that.
Yes, absolutely.
Our fire department.
Yes.
Referrals and things.
Mm-hmm. Good question. Any other questions?
We have you on our website, and parents can take a look there for information, but that phone number that you gave us, is that the best place to get more information about you, or where would you suggest that we go?
If you want to contact me directly, here's all my contact information. That's my direct line, but the number before that, that 877, that's the Youth Mobile Crisis Line for Oakland County.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How many teams are there? You say you have to get a team out in 60 minutes. That's the criteria.
Yes. There is one team, but they have eight clinicians and then two full-time social work technicians, so they work on rotating shifts. So in the time that we're open, they have three rotating shifts, so that should somebody call, they're able to deploy out another team. So they always have a backup should they get like two calls at the same time or regardless, they're able to coordinate.
Okay, but you still have to reach the whole county?
Yes, it's, it's very challenging.
Does it say it's challenging, making that?
Yep, in the rural counties, they have two hours to be able to get to the individual, but since Oakland County by the state were designated as an urban county, they gave us 60 minutes, which is very challenging if you have to go to like Holly and then somewhere completely on the other side of the county like Hazel Park or South Lion or wherever. So it's very challenging, so.
Thank you, Megan. Very informative.
Thank you.
And we will, as Clerk Schultz mentioned, this information's available on our website as well as this board packet that you can reach. So thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
All right. Next is on to pay the bills. Is there a motion tonight to approve the bills in the amount of $337,997.20?
I move. Support.
Okay, discussion, comments, questions? Donnie?
No, I'm just glad it's so low.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up. Cool. Any other comments from the board?
Real fast, at your mic. At your place, as you'll see the payroll line item plus the credit card, and Tannen was so gracious to take care of that for me. Us, not me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment on the bills? Roll call, please, Clerk Schultz.
Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz, yes. Steel?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Del Rumpo?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Staimo?
Yes.
The bills are paid. Brings us to public comment. This gives, there are several opportunities for you all to talk to us. This is the first opportunity you have, and this would be for items that are not on tonight's agenda, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes or less so we can get through our business. Would anyone like to address the board on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? If you hear about something on the agenda, you can come up then, but yeah, come on forward. And just states your name and address for the record, please.
I have this too at your place.
So my name is Chad Cromwell. Address is 298 Coats Road in Lake Orient. So again, my name's Chad. This is my wife, Tracy Cromwell. This is our friends Erica Schmal and Jeremy and Justin Fox, and we're here tonight to talk about an organization called Young Life. And Young Life is a global organization that's been around since 1941, and our mission is all about teaching adolescents about Jesus Christ and helping them grow in their faith. And the best way to describe Young Life is literally it's just one big celebration, and our kids just have an absolute great time, and it's, it's for every kid regardless of ability, circumstance, race, or culture, and it's all about having fun, all while offering that grace and teaching the truth. And our leaders are focused on different building of relationships with the kids and really earning the right and the trust to teach them about Christ and come alongside them when they're going through the difficult struggles of life and going after the different things that life brings their way.
Young Life is making a difference in the teenagers in the community by coming alongside and just making sure the youth in the community are taken care of. Our committee is made up of parents, Young Life alumni, civic leaders, and church leaders that provide financial, administrative, and moral support for the Young Life staff. Once a week is what we call a club where the teenager, it's for teenagers, and it's, we call it a party with a purpose, and it's controlled chaos that none of us could understand, but teenagers know when they see it. And at the end of the party, we share a message about God's love, and that is exactly why we're there, to celebrate.
All right. Young Life also offers camps for our young people to be able to go to and experience, and we find that Young Life works best by building relationships and in a trusting and positive relationship with the youth, and camps offer them that opportunity to just grow and build those relationships with each other. Young Life has 32 resort-like camps throughout the world, and our students are able to go and experience those typically in the summer, but they also do offer some weekend ones throughout the school year, and kids say it's the best week of their lives where they're able to just build relationships with their team leaders and with the other youth that they go with.
So in order to support this, this organization, we have to have various fundraisers. We have our second fundraiser coming up on, on May 4th. It's actually a 5K, and it's going to take place at Friendship Park at 8:00 AM. We're going to have two races, actually. One is going to be a 5K, a competitive 5K, and the first race of the day will be a fun run. So kids of all ages can run in these races, and we're really looking forward to having the event, and we hope to see some runners out there, and thank you for your support. Yeah, so overall, I mean, Young Life is all, it's just about the kids and building them up and helping them through life and the different curveballs that life throws at them. So, yeah, that's what Young Life is all about. So, any questions?
I had one quick one. How can we register for the event, Chad?
We do have, the, the link is on there. It's on the card that we put in your hands. It's Young Life. Can't remember exactly off the top of my head.
And you have a Facebook page, too?
Yep, we do have a Facebook page as well. Learn more about it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment at this time? We'll close that, give you a chance later if you think of anything. Next item is approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any, there's some additional information, but I don't think there are any additions. At your place was the request to schedule the joint meeting, and I'm going to, and then the memo regarding our job as well from, from my office, so.
And we just, Chris, if I may, we just had an amended graph on item 8G or 10G, and then the summary that Trustee Flood spoke of for the payroll detail for item number seven, approval of bills.
And so, is there any other changes or a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. We will be voting on approving all of these items at the same time, and those items consist of minutes from our last board meeting, a request for street closure for the Lake Inagro, Lake Orient Turkey Trot, Square Lake Water Quality Special Assessment District authorizing a cost estimate, the 2019 road chloride program, annual reports from the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals from the last year, where we will be setting a joint public hearing date for Silver Bell Point PUD. We will have, be receiving and filing the quarterly treasures report, approving an alcohol permit for the Lions Club, accepting a donation of an easement from the Fish family for our Iron Bell Trail connection on East Clarkson Road, scheduling a joint meeting with the Township Board, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals for April 10th at 7:00 PM at Township Hall, and accepting an employee resignation with regret and posting the opening, amending the cell tower lease at Fire Station 2, and an investment policy update that came back from the last meeting. So all those items will be approved if I first get a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay.
Was that 10th, did you say?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I did the poll, and everybody on this board, and I believe everyone that... everyone that responded could make the meeting on the April 10th at 7:00 PM. And the meeting will be here at Township Hall. There were a few people that did not respond yet, but I emailed or texted them this afternoon in here. But we're going to schedule it because the fact that we can get 18 of the 18 people that have already responded on one day is a miracle. So we have a CIA meeting that night at 5:00, and then we'll just follow that up with this meeting. And it will happen down here in this room. We'll be kind of more informal. We'll be in a big U shape. We typically do these meetings once or twice a year, or once every year, every other year, just to kind of have all the different committees together to discuss ordinances, things that we may need to update, master plan, all that good stuff.
So here at Township Hall, 7 o'clock PM, April 10th?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Pending, we want on the agenda, just send it to you.
Anything you want on the agenda, send it to me or to Tammy. Oh. Donnie?
I just want to, on the consent agenda, just shout out to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for all their hard work and the report that was submitted in the packet because that's a lot of time and effort. Most of it's volunteer. So I thank Tammy and her department for putting together, and the ZBA and the Planning Commission for John and Mike and many residents that make that happen. So a lot of hours into that. And I just want to make a comment for a thank you for the easement along Clarkson Row for the connection path.
Yes. We're down to four that we need. And so if you didn't know, we got a grant to connect the Paint Creek and Pallion Trails, which is part of the Iron Bell Trail. The trail goes all the way from Ironwood, Michigan, on the border of Wisconsin, and the UP all the way to Belle Isle. But the big section that we're excited to connect, and we are accepting in one of the last five easements remaining is, but the section is between Lapeer Road, which is, there's Planet Fitness building, but we're going to build a path from Lapeer Road down. It's going to cross the creek right where the dam used to be, Ruds Mill, and then it's going to be a connector to the Paint Creek Trail. So we're getting easements from these residents that live along this stretch, and we're grateful. It's going to be awesome, and it's going to be built next year in 2020. And we received a $1.2 million grant to do that project. Mike?
You'll probably say this too, Chris, but I wanted to give a shout out to Anna Marie Stuben. That's our township employee who had to, with a regret, resignation. And Anna worked at the Orion Center. She's a programmer for the Parking and Rec Department. It was a pleasure working with her, and she did a great service to our community. And I want to wish her the best in her future.
Yep. I, ditto. I agree. Okay. Any other comments from the board on any of these items? If you're here tonight on any of these items and you want to address the board, this is your opportunity because we will be taking action on all of them at the same time. Seeing no one run forward, we will close public comment, and we will bring it back up to a roll call vote. Please, Clerk Schultz?
Bernie?
Yes.
Del Rumpo?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Staimo?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz, yes. Steel?
Yes.
Okay. And I also, just one other thing I did want to note is we do have that, because sometimes these do get missed, but remember, but just note that we do have a public hearing, a joint public hearing on a proposed PUD scheduled for the 20th at 7:05 PM here. So please put that, that is for all of you on this board. All right. That completes the consent agenda and takes us to pending business, which we have two items tonight. The first item is a first reading from the Planning Commission, the first case of this year, 2019-01, parcel B1 rezone request. I will turn this over to Clerk Schultz, and I'll try to pop up some pictures for you to look at. But basically, before you start, Clerk Schultz, this is a rezone request that has gone to the Planning Commission, but now is coming to the board for review and potential approval. And it is the parcel that is the Shalom Baptist Church piece, which is just the front part of the piece, the frontage along Baldwin Road. And it's just north of the Baldwin Commage, which houses Colts. So just so if you're here for that, you already know where it's at. But if you're not, just to orient you on what we're going to be talking about. And now I will be quiet and turn it over to you, Clerk Schultz.
And so the applicant asked us to wait on this, so I believe they're here tonight?
Yes.
Is the applicant here? Fantastic. Thank you so much. This is the board action for tonight, PC 2019-01, parcel B1 rezone request, requesting to rezon the on-address parcel 0932301012, located at the northwest corner of Morgan and Baldwin Roads. It's also now part of 3400 Morgan Road. And that's parcel 0932301011. They want to rezon from single-family residential 1, R1, to Brown Road Innovation Zone Biz, use groups A, B, and C. So the Planning Commission at their January 16th meeting passed a motion to recommend approval of PC 2019-01 parcel B1 rezone request. The Orion Township Board of Trustees will declare their first reading held tonight, March 1st. And if the Board of Trustees concurs with the Planning Commission recommendation to approve, then the motion will be part of the first reading was held and then approved on March 4th. But then we'll also direct myself, the clerk, to publish for the second reading and possible approval of PC 2019-01 parcel B1 rezone request on April 15th, 2019. If the Board of Trustees wishes to deny first reading, then the Board of Trustees declares the first reading was held and denied on March 19th. The board has before them those motions, which will do in accordance. We also have from the Planning Commission a letter to the Board of Trustees regarding what has been done to date on this opportunity to rezon. You have a rezoning application submitted by the applicant who is here tonight to answer questions, if the board might have it. That application is considered complete. You also have Carlisle Wartman Associate, who is our planner review. They've also included the minutes, if the public wants to take a look at those minutes from that meeting. So the Township Board of Trustees has everything that we need to make an informed decision. And I move that we declare the Orion Township Board of Trustees held and approved the first reading on March 4th, 2019, for PC 2019-01 parcel B1 rezone request, requesting to rezon on-address parcel 0932301012, located at the northwest corner of Morgan and Baldwin Road and part of 3400 Morgan Road, 0932301011, from single-family residential 1, R1, to Brown Road Innovation Zone Biz, use groups A, B, and C. And direct clerk, you advertise for second reading and possible approval on April 15th, 2019.
Support. Okay. It's been a motion, and there's been support. Let's discuss it. First of all, the applicant is here. It's Mr. Jason Kishmas. As noted in the application, the map is on the screen. I guess I could zoom in a little bit so you could see it. So I don't know if the board has any specific questions. I mean, we've had a opportunity, we have had the opportunity to review the minutes and the action from the recommendations from the Planning Commission. John, do you want to add anything based on your, John, if you didn't know, is our representative to the Planning Commission from the Township Board. Anything that you want to add to this?
Well, I mean, people who didn't know, haven't read everything yet. If you kind of look at it, it makes sense that this is coming because a lot has changed on Baldwin Road with all the work they're doing there and stuff. So really, the buffer along that frontage kind of makes sense that it should be something different. And it's part of the, so we're just extending the Biz district. They want to extend the Biz district up, and I think that's a good thing. So we do have some entities that fall in under that. But so I think it's not a bad thing to do, and it makes sense to do it this time, like I said, because of the changes that have occurred there. So I kind of concurred with that.
Okay. Mike?
I watched the Planning Commission on this, and I agree with the great work they've done on this. It was a unanimous recommendation to the board. For those people familiar with that area, that's where Shalom Baptist Church is at. And the church is staying. The church is not going away. They've sold off the front parcels there on Baldwin and a little bit north and just a little bit west. They broke those parcels off for development. So that will still be, like John said, that will still be a good buffer for the people who live up on Pepper Mill, up in that area off of Morgan. So.
Donnie?
I just did want to comment, too, that apparently the gas line still is in the middle of that parcel. And so it kind of restricts what can be built there based on the size in which it can, something can be built. So it does say in the minutes and stuff that like a Walmart and a Myers would not be able to fit there because they need square footage of close to 100,000 square feet. And that would not allow that type of a business there. So I think that's good in the sense that it cuts down on the traffic count. So that's what I read.
Great. All right. Any other comments, questions from the board? Petitioners here could ask questions, answer questions. Open this up for public comment. Is anyone here to give public comment on this proposed rezone request? Seeing no one come forward. Yeah, I would just echo kind of what's already been said. One of the reasons we did not look at this, you know, when we did update the master plan, from my perspective at least, is because it was a church, and churches are typically in the residential zoning districts. Now, the church has wanted to sell a piece, which they have done or are in the process of doing, and it makes sense for a lot of reasons that the frontage on Baldwin would be able to be something besides residential, single-family residential. So with that, and seeing no one else come forward, I would ask the clerk, and I don't think you want to add anything because it doesn't seem like there are any questions?
Happy to ask whatever question I ask anything, but it's not going to be a small, not going to be a long one.
Okay. And that was Mr. Kishmas. And if you're watching at home, because we let him break the rule and not speak through the microphone, he said that he's happy to answer questions, but it won't be a box store, as was mentioned. It will be a smaller retail-type development that they will be targeting or developing there. With that, Penny, would you please call the roll?
Del Rumpo?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Staimo?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz, yes. Steel?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, that takes us to one last item on tonight's pending business, which was Odd Job. Back to the, Odd Job report to the board. Just for an update, this is on the agenda tonight. Odd Job has been requested to give an update to the board based on their appearance at our board meeting on January 7th, which we request is specific information to be submitted a hundred before February 25th, 2019, based on the numerous complaints the township has received dating back to the last year. At that January 7th meeting, we did ask for those items to be submitted on the 25th. We also indicated at that time that the request for an ordinance 73 license renewal, which we require all garbage haulers in the township to have an annual license renewal. We did let them know at that meeting that it would be discussed today, March 4th, based on the information they provided to us based on the request for information. This item tonight is for discussion purposes only. The township officials did meet in person with the two owners of Odd Job on February 18th, 2019, upstairs in our conference room. At that meeting, the meeting was attended by our building official, David Goodlow, ordinance enforcement officer, Al Daisley, myself, and Samantha Timko, who's in my office, as well as the two principals of Odd Job. At that time, we reiterated the request for information and the importance of responding to the township's requests so that we could take action to hopefully renew their license. We also reviewed the request of the township board to ensure that they understood what we were requesting, as well as the seriousness of the issues and alleged complaints. At that time, they did tell us in person that they understood, and they would get the information to us. Based on a ramp up of complaints that we continued to receive, we sent another correspondence to Odd Job on February 8th, 2019, demanding an immediate response based on, again, as I mentioned, a number of growing complaints. Frankly, we have been, there's been days here at Township Hall where we have been, all progress on any other projects we work and that we try to work on has been stifled based on the number of residents that have called, emailed, and/or visited us in person. We, all of the correspondences have been hand-delivered by a process server to their office because they have not responded to any of the emails that we've sent them, including the emails we've sent to the addresses which they have requested that we use, which they told us they would respond to when we met with them in person on February 18th. As of 6:30 PM, February 28th, when I wrote this memo, and actually, I can say as of 7:45 PM today, we have not received any response to the written requests and verbal requests from the township board and township officials from January 7th, January 18th, February 8th, including numerous phone calls and emails that have also been sent in addition to those formal inquiries. On the day that I wrote this memo alone, the township received at least 11 complaints, or we changed that to 12 official complaints. So at this time, I would ask if there's anyone here from Odd Job to address the board. If you could just state your name and your position with Odd Job, please?
Yeah, my name is Jim Leinbach. I'm a friend of Aaron Walter, who's a co-owner of Odd Jobs.
Are you, are you, you're here to speak on behalf of them?
I am, yes.
And they, they understand you're here to talk, to answer the requests of the board?
They have prepared a statement that unfortunately, they're not able to be here. And they've prepared a statement and asked me to bring it here and read it for you.
Okay.
Can he spell his name?
Can you spell your name for the record, please?
Yes. James, J-M-E-S, Leinbach, L-E-I-N-B, A-C-H.
Thank you, sir.
And who asked you to be here?
Aaron Walter.
Okay.
Co-owner.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Kelly, there's no issue with me?
No.
Okay.
I apologize for my reading. The type is fairly small here, and I'm waiting for my new glasses. So bear with me. Good evening. We wish we were able to be there tonight, but we are unfortunately still stuck at work. Since we last met, we have taken steps to right-size the business by tightening our borders. We have been processing refunds for the people who have decided to find other service and have been diligently working on getting a better system for calls and emails. In a meeting between Odd Job, Chris Barnett, and a few other employees of the township, we had gone over our plan of action. We spoke with Chris and informed him a call center just wasn't in our budget. We simply cannot afford to pay $135 for 120 minutes worth of calls and 90 cents a minute after that with a customer base of 10,000 homes. He stated, and I believe that's Chris that he's referring to here, stated that he understood and that, however, in the weeks following, we received a letter from the township attorney stating that we must hire a call center immediately in order to keep up our permits. That was just one of many inconsistencies we have dealt with from the board since our last meeting. We also stated that we couldn't process all of the refunds at once, but would process as many at a time as we could. At the time, we were told that it was up to us how to handle the refunds. Weeks later, the attorney's letter stated that it was not up to us. We have tried to pick up everything on a weekly basis. However, weather has made it impossible to operate as normal. In order to keep up and not keep trash on the ground, we have from time to time pushed a pickup date back a day or two in order to keep our employees and the residents of Lake Orion safe. The letter from the township attorney, however, informed us that we must pick up on the date on the day of the week in which the residents are signed up for. This means we would be forced to push back some of our customers for several weeks at a time, as it seems almost every Wednesday, there is snow, ice, or temperatures dropping to 30 below zero with the wind chill. We question are the other companies that service Lake Orion being penalized for not picking up on the same days? picking up on the same days in inclement weather? We have heard from other customers of some of the larger companies who went six weeks without pickups because their trucks wouldn't go down the back roads. We thought that we were doing the right thing by our customers by pushing service back a day or two. However, it seems that we were wrong. This board has made it difficult for us to turn things around by saying and agreeing to one thing in person and then by sending off something different by your attorney. You also requested the full name and contact information, email address, and address of an Oddjob representative slash employee who can be contacted directly by an Orion Township representative in the case of complaints or other inquiries. We supplied you that information, yet the following day, however, you have continued to go through our back office for inquiries upon getting the messages. When we call back, we get no response in return. We question why there would be such a request for our personal contact information and then not use it. It seems as if there was an effort to try and make it seem like we're trying to avoid the township and perhaps hoping that we didn't get the message from our staff or return the emails or calls. In a letter dated February 8th, your attorney stated that it was recommended that our permit not be renewed, but that we can reapply on March 18th, 2019. Why go through all of this trouble now to pull our permit, but then offer for us to reapply just 12 days later? Just another moment that has left us scratching our heads. According to the letter we received, our last date of service, our last date to service the Lake Orion community will be March 31st, 2019. We at Oddjob are extremely grateful to have had the opportunity to service the Lake Orion community for the last 12 years. Unfortunately, we hit a pretty big rough patch in our 11th year and have struggled to turn things right-side up. Thank you to our loyal customers, family, and friends that have been Team Oddjob from the time we opened our doors and for sticking with us through good times and bad. And that concludes the letter.
Okay. Is that? Thank you.
Yeah.
Just so, I just want to be clear, and I think I know, but I want to make sure that the board and the public knows and people are watching, that you have, you've been asked to read this letter, but you can't officially speak on behalf of Oddjob.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leinbach.
Yep.
Do you have a copy of that letter?
Yeah, we'll need a copy of that for sure.
Aaron should have emailed it to you. If he hasn't, I'm certain it's on there.
I mean, honestly, we have received zero correspondence since January 18th when they were in our office, not, except for several calls I've made, I've received one call back. He got my voicemail and said he was busy and he would call me back. So we have not received one written correspondence from Oddjob to date, not one.
I understand.
Email, writing, smoke signal, that one, nothing has been in writing, not one thing. So this would be the first thing we've received, and unfortunately, it doesn't sound like it addresses any of the things we asked them to address. So we'll get a copy of that for the record. And I was going to say, we can't really ask Mr. Leinbach questions because I wanted to make sure he can't answer on behalf of Oddjob, but I think it might make sense, Mr. Kelly, because there are some things that were stated in that letter that I'd like to, if it's okay, read what we sent to them.
Sure, that's fine.
Because I know, I'm assuming most of the people that are left in the room are here because they're interested in this issue. So on January 9th, this was the letter that went to the board, and it did come through our, from our attorney's, I'm sorry, came from our attorney's office to Oddjob. Dear Mr. Walter, January 9th, as you know, on January 7th, 2019, the Tredor Township of Orion Board of Trustees conducted a license revocation hearing under ordinance 73, Section 8. With conditions, the Board of Trustees decided not to revoke your ordinance 73 license and directed me to forward to you in writing the expectations and conditions for any further future license renewal. As discussed by the Board of Trustees and contained in its motion, the Board has requested that you provide the following information on or before February 25th, 2019. One, as stated in Clerk Penny Schultz's prior correspondence of December 14th, 2018, the Board of Trustees is requesting a written response with a timeline as to what steps will be taken to resolve your license deficiencies, which include late trash pickup or missed weeks, recyclable trash not picked up per schedule, mixing recyclables with regular trash, yard waste not picked up per schedule, and mixing yard waste with regular trash. Number two, the number of Orion customers serviced by Oddjob. Number three, a written statement on behalf of Oddjob confirming that upon cancellation of garbage collection services by any Orion resident, a full refund of any prepaid amount will be made, which should include, I'm sorry, additionally, a statement of the process required to obtain such refund, which should include the contact information necessary to process the refund. Number four, the full name, contact phone number, email address, and address of an Oddjob representative or employee who can be contacted directly by Orion Township representatives in the case of complaints or other inquiries. Assuming receipt of above information has been received on or before February 25th, 2019, the Board will consider Oddjob's request for renewal of its ordinance 73 license at its public meeting on March 4th tonight. This does not constitute a waiver of any obligation of Oddjob ordinance 73, of Oddjob under ordinance 73, and a proper application and fees should be completed per the ordinance. Rather, in light of the evidence presented at the revocation hearing prior to issuance of a renewal of the license, the Board will review the above requested information and your company's performance and attempts to correct deficiencies. As set forth in the ordinance, the Board reserves all rights to review any Oddjob renewal application. In letter of the above, please note that the written documentation should be submitted to the Township Clerk's Office on or before February 25th, and the Board will publicly consider the information at the meeting on March 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. You are strongly encouraged to attend the March 4th, 2019, meeting. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Yours truly, Dan Kelly of the Kelly Firm, P.C. Again, there's another letter that was sent on February 8th based on, after our January meeting, so the public can understand where they did, we said you have to at least answer the phone. And we actually were trying to be very helpful and brainstorming with these two gentlemen, which we all have a heart for, there's no question there, to say, so if you don't, you can't not answer our calls and residents' calls because they call, if you don't answer the call, they call us, and we are literally inundated, and you might not believe me, but I have a file and Penny could probably show you, it's at least this thick. So we said, hey, what if you put an ad in the review? What if you, you know, pay 20 bucks an hour to someone, I bet you you'd get somebody that would be willing to answer your phone. So fast forward to a month, almost a month later, and we had no response and growing complaints. So this letter went out saying, Mr. Walter and/or Oddjob disposal licensee holder, as you know, on January 7th, the Board of Trustees, and then it goes through and kind of highlights some of the things that were already covered in the last letter, you're also directed to provide the following information on or before February 25th, which goes through those same points. Since the January 7th hearing, the township has continued to receive complaints. These include continued late or missed trash pickups, recyclables not being picked up, and so on. Your failure to pick up the trash has become a safety concern. Under Section 5 of the ordinance, the Board has the authority to refuse or grant any application for any just cause or when in its judgment the public health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the township so require. And then it lists those sections in the ordinance and it puts those in writing. Further, Oddjob's departure from its filed schedule of days and areas for conducting a solid waste collection business violates the ordinance, which is a new complaint. Under Section 9(c) of the ordinance, all licensees are required to comply with the following, which talks about the schedule that they're filed with the clerk on what days they'll be doing pickups. Please note that you must immediately pick up existing garbage, set up a call center for citizens, and respond to citizens in a timely, in timely by email or otherwise as to when garbage will be picked up. And three, issue refunds to customers who have canceled your service, which they had told us in person in the meeting and in our meeting on January 18th that they would do. Our recommendation is non-renewal of your license to engage in the business of solid waste collection. Based on the above statements, you are hereby put on notice at our determination that there has been a failure to comply with the ordinance requirements. To be clear, your current permit will expire on March 31st. If you choose to reapply, the Board will consider your applications at the public meeting on March 18th. Prior to this date, the Board has requested you provide additional information that must be submitted on or before February 25th. Please note, if your license is not renewed, you will only be permitted to collect trash and recyclables up until March 31st. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Dan Kelly, the Kelly Firm, P.C. So, I mean, I wanted to read that because there were some things that are in this letter that we just got read into the record by Mr. Leinbach that sort of said things contrary to that. I'll just say that we really want and hoped that the things that were told to us in the meeting when they came and in our meeting on January 18th would happen, and frankly, none of them have happened. We did, the Board did allow Sunday pickups, which is outside of the ordinance, and we were told there would be a schedule, they would communicate with us, and we offered to help get the word out. They were going to use those Sundays to catch up when they were behind and mostly to pick up yard waste. And to our knowledge, no yard waste has been picked up. I did check with a couple of residents today, and they still have yard waste out since November, which is an ordinance violation, not of Oddjob, of the residents who are customers of Oddjob. You can only have your garbage out for 24 hours. So it's become a huge problem. And I think the most frustrating thing, we're grateful for this. Unfortunately, it's a week after we requested three different times to please, please, please get us this information. Do you clearly understand what we're asking? The answer was yes, and we have just received this, and frankly, I disagree. I mean, some of the things that they're saying in here, we're not wanting them to fail. We want them to succeed. We gave them a course of action that they can do, and we are not demanding they have a call center, but they have to answer their phone and respond to residents and to us, frankly. And we're not trying to send a mixed message. That's why we try to send everything through our attorney, reiterating in each letter what we had asked them to do originally back in December. To date, we still have not received a response. This is not a response. This does not answer any of the questions that we asked them in December, January 8th, January 18th, February 8th. This doesn't answer any of those questions, so we still don't have any of the questions answered. And I will let everyone in the public know and everyone on the board, we are not making a decision tonight. We are hoping to get information that will assist us in our decision at our next meeting. So, I said a lot there. Is there anything that I didn't say that I should say, Dan?
No, you've covered it, right.
I would open it up to the board to make any comments or a motion to receive and file the letter, which I will note, we are, we believe you, Mr. Leinbach, but it does not, it's not on letterhead. It doesn't say anything about who wrote it or anything, but I'm, we'll just assume that someone from Oddjob wrote this.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Penny?
I would like to thank Mr. James Leinbach for coming tonight and presenting that letter on behalf of Oddjob. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Definitely. And I would like to make a motion to receive and file the report that was presented by the supervisor with a memo dated February 28th, 2018.
Did we just, am I the only one that got a copy of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would just note that there's no title block, there's no signature, there's no date, so we're just, we're receiving and filing the letter that was presented by Mr. Leinbach.
I'm not making a motion to receive and file that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm thanking him for his time.
Oh, okay.
And then my motion is to receive and file the report presented by the supervisor, Chris Barnett, regarding Oddjob report to the board, February 28th, as presented.
Support that motion.
Okay.
I also have a comment.
So we're not officially receiving, we're, we're, okay.
No, sir.
We're officially receiving, filing my report.
I was just thanking him.
Mike, go ahead.
I, I, I would like a little clarification on that last paragraph that was read. I was trying to follow along, and I, we want to read the last paragraph.
I will read it, but I just want to be clear, I don't, it's not fair to ask Mr. Leinbach to, to, to read into this either because he's, I mean, he's not an employee of the company or an owner, have ownership interest, but the last paragraph of the letter that was read into the record was, according to the letter we received, our last date to service the Lake Orion community will be March 31st, 2019. We at Oddjob are extremely grateful to have had the opportunity to service the Lake Orion community for the last 12 years. Unfortunately, we hit a pretty rough patch in our 11th year and have struggled to turn things right-side up. Thank you to our loyal customers, family, and friends that have been Team Oddjob from time we opened our doors and for sticking with us through good times and bad. So I don't know, we have not received, for everyone here and the board, we have not received, frankly, we have not received any applications for any of the four haulers to renew their licenses as of this afternoon, correct, Clerk Schultz?
That's correct. I've received no applications. I've only received one request from someone wanting to know if they could bid when the time comes.
May I ask a question to the clerk?
Mike.
Have the letters been sent out to the?
Yes, sir.
To all the trash haulers that were licensed last year?
Yes, they have. All licensed haulers that we currently have on record, which are advanced disposal, Oddjob, Green for Life, and Waste Management did receive the application packets. Those were sent approximately a month ago at the direction and advice of our township attorney. They were sent to all four of the existing.
Thank you. And that's been our past, congrats in years past.
Yes, sir, that has.
Thank you.
Did you get this or is this the only copy?
It is the only copy.
I'm going to give this back to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, Donnie?
This is just kind of a comment and not a question directed towards you, James, but to me, we, we don't hire garbage people. It's not as the township board, it's not what the township board does. We only approve licenses to pick up garbage. So personally, I would recommend the public to be conscious of who that they have picked to pick up their garbage because it's a personal choice, and if, as a public enterprise or as a public person, I would recommend that you pick whoever provides the best service. And personally, if I had trouble with my garbage and blowing in the street and it not being picked up and the recyclable being thrown in the regular garbage and my lawn waste still being there and that I could get a violation for garbage laying in my front yard, that I would really consider maybe picking a different waste hauler because I have that free choice and it's not up to the board on whose garbage that we pick up. So I would recommend to the public at large to pick accordingly. So that's just a recommendation because it's not our job to pick the garbage or waste hauler. So I just am making a public announcement.
Fred? I just, I have to make a comment on what was said in that letter. The public probably has no clue the amount of calls, texts, emails, meetings, complaints that have gone into Township Hall to probably every single person sitting here. Now, that's our job, we get that. It's not, I'm not saying we can't do that, but I can honestly probably say that I've probably answered more questions and taken more calls than Oddjob's has in the last two months. And that's a joke. And this is the icing on the incompetent cake for me. This is, this is absolutely ridiculous. I, you know, we extended our hand, tried to help the last meeting, giving pointers, giving free advice, saying this is what you should, this is what you shouldn't do, and that was met with open arms, I thought, I think most of us thought. And now to get something like this at the 11th hour, when we've sent out numerous communication, been busting our butts, not doing what we are supposed to be doing, but following up on all this, trying to talk to our citizens, saying, look, we're trying, we're trying to make a difference, we're trying to make this happen, and then to have this come back saying we're misleading them, we're not being truthful, is total.
Garbage.
Garbage. I mean, it really is. And I'm so sick of talking about garbage, I can't even take it anymore. It's ridiculous. So I just, I know there's, especially this full-time staff here has been inundated with this, and it's just ridiculous and that, you know, I don't know, from the sounds of the letter, and Jim, this isn't reflect, I'm not, you're standing there, you know, this has nothing to do with you. I'm just, I'm more frustrated about the whole situation because I thought we were coming to a better conclusion than this, and then basically they're just pointing fingers at us. From what it sounds, from what I heard in that letter, they're pointing at us like we're the ones pushing them out, and that's just not the case. So it's unfortunate, but I think the public needs to know that we've done our due diligence to try to make this right, to try to help everybody, to try to answer his questions that frankly is none of our business. So I hope you guys can all understand that, and I'm talking to the citizens now, that we've been doing this and we've been working our butts off and we've been trying to get the right. the right information with what we have, which is nothing. So, that's all I have to say.
Penny, go ahead.
I know in the clerk's office, we've received well over 100 calls, we've received emails, walk-in customers, on a very regular basis regarding the performance of Oddjob, and I know that the Township Board of Trustees, with all due diligence, has tried to help Oddjob through the process. I think we've come to an impasse, and I know that not having received any applications from them, I, I don't even know that the Board would be able to approve it based on their performance to date, but we've been very careful to get everything out to them with every, everything that we've had. We've had a server bring their paperwork to them, we've emailed, we've sent to their post office box, there've been meetings that have been held. Everyone is working really hard, and we don't even want to give out misinformation to the residents that are calling. So we're being really, really careful and guarded with what we're saying to people. From a personal perspective, my husband and I changed our trash pickup service about a month ago, because we weren't able to move forward. We came to an impasse.
So, so, thank you for being here, Mr. Leinbach, and we will definitely open up to public comment, we always do, just so the public knows, we're not taking any action except for receiving and filing the verbal report that I just read, which was the letters that we sent to the, to Oddjob. And I'll just say one more thing. I mean, I sent, I just look to just, to not embellish anything. I sent the email to the Board at 7:50 PM on Thursday, and at the time, there, and I actually went through and counted the 11 residents that had reached out via email, Facebook, or phone call that day. And I, the reason I was here, and I'm not looking for a credit or an award, is I, I do pride myself on getting back with every resident that reaches out to me about any issue, and the reason I said 11 and it out was 12, is there was someone that called after that, and I was here until 8 o'clock on Thursday night responding to the residents. It has been a huge draw on our resources. And the residents are really frustrated, because most of the people that are left are people that have really been trying for the last three or four months. But there were two subs today that I talked to, one sub that I used to live in, and they've said they are on six weeks, the entire sub of not getting recycling picked up. And the other sub was four weeks. So, there has been, the, the nature of the meetings and the feedback has been, we have been really trying to give a hand, a hand down to say, "Hey, please, you know, let us help you, let's brainstorm," you know? There are residents in this boardroom on January 8th that offered to help with social media, offered to help with their office. I know some of them actually did help with social media, help with a business plan. And from what I can tell, it started, like, the first week, it was a good start, and then all that stuff sort of went by the wayside, and at some point, we as a Township Board have to make decisions on the behalf of the rest of the residents. So, with that, I'd open it up, the, to public comment. I just want to remind the Board, or remind the public that we are not deciding Oddjob's fate tonight. They certainly can submit an application, as was noted in the letters to them, they can submit an application. Those will all be reviewed on our March 18th meeting, assuming we get some. So with that, anybody wants to address the Board regarding this, feel free to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Leinbach, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lillian Hutchison, do you want comments just about Oddjob or garbage in general? Because my question is, if nobody's wanting to pick up garbage in Orion Township, if they're not coming in for, to pay or, you know, to get the permit to do it, then what is Orion Township going to do if there's no garbage people? Who's going to be allowed to pick up?
I believe we'll have applicants. They're not even going to be looked at until that second meeting in March, which is the 18th, and the deadline is the 15th of March to present.
What I would request of the Board and the public is that we'll take all the comments-
Sorry, Chris.
That's okay, that's okay. Just because it's the way we do it, we'll take the comments, if there are questions, we'll answer them. I can absolutely answer your question, but we're going to get all the public comment at one point.
Okay, the only, my only comment, and I know nobody's going to like it, but you people want one hauler, and you're probably going to get it, because it sounds like a lot of them, I know a lot has happened this last year. I know there's people that have closed down and consolidated, and my daughter-in-law is up on all this stuff and keeps me informed. So I'm wondering if, maybe we didn't do this to ourselves, maybe no, maybe they think you're going to one hauler, so there's no sense of coming in, and maybe I'm totally wrong. And I do feel bad about a person losing their business here, but if they're not picking up garbage, then nobody wants them, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? And if you want to comment on this, if you just want to line up, it'll go quicker, it'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Ken Dolly, I live at 236 Orion Terrace in Lake Orion. First of all, thank you, Mr. Leinbach, to cojones to come in here to, to carry that torch there for, for your friends. I am also in trash pickup limbo land right now. I've looked at the price comparison chart that the clerk published, and I'm not getting anything close to that. They're quoting me, you know, $20 a quarter more. That was specifically Advanced. They're quoting me $93 a quarter. So there's some disparity there, inconsistency. I would also like to implore the Board to investigate or look at the possibility of one hauler. I mean, I, I moved here from Rochester Hills, and there's a fellow there that Mr. Barnett is pretty close to, I think, and-
I was going to answer the joke.
They did that, they did the same thing. They went to one trash hauler, it was a win-win for everybody, the rates went down, our roads were not pounded continuously by the trash haulers. I live on a dirt road that is a private dirt road, and we have to maintain it, and it is, it's just continuous, day after day, just all the trash haulers, among other trucks. But I would like to implore the Board to along that avenue. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hey, I'm Kenny Spears, I'm, live at 312 Creek Sedge, Lake Orion. I just wanted to make the comment that it's possible that the reason you're not getting applications for new trash haulers, as well as a lot of other businesses leaving or not serving the Orion Township area, is because the Village of Lake Orion has declared war on commercial vehicles. Not a week goes by that I don't see multiple trucks pulled over by the Village of Lake Orion. They have taken it upon themselves to put one of their officers through a two-week DOT inspection course, and now he sits there and chases down anybody pulling a trailer, anybody driving a semi. I saw U.S. Foods pulled over on Saturday. I would imagine most people here have seen commercial vehicles pulled over on a constant basis, not only in the Village, but now he's pulling people over in Orion Township, over by Golling, on South M24, as far as Silver Bell Road, I've seen him. And I've talked to a lot of local business owners that said that they will no longer operate in Orion Township, and that could be why you're not getting as many applications for garbage hauling in the area. I have personally been up to Oddjob's office and seen a stack of DOT tickets, this thick, on their desk, and a lot of those tickets that they get can range anywhere from $500 to $5,000. And a lot of these, not just Oddjobs, but a lot of these owner-operators are just like landscape guys, lawn mowing crews, getting hit with these ridiculous DOT fines. So, my point is, I know there's probably not a whole lot you can do about what the Village of Lake Orion does, but if you continue to allow truck inspections to be made in the Orion Township area, you're going to continue to get small businesses chased out of the area. So, that's it, thanks.
Thanks for your back.
Mark Tarquini, 2823, Waring Place, new resident of Lake Orion, is of June of last year.
Welcome.
I've never had a problem with my rubbish collector, and if I did, I would change it. I agree with Ms. Steele with her comment, that if you don't have good service, you fire them, get somebody else. My new boss in this side of the state said, "This is my job to lose," when he hired me. I don't understand why some people are still with Oddjob. I have a counter-comment to the gentleman before me. I believe that we have state and local ordinance for a reason, to protect our citizens and our infrastructure. These people that are getting pulled over may be because they're over the weight limits or they're leaking oil or whatever, or just, that may be destroying our roads. My road in front of my own home has a very large tear that is probably there from the multiple trucks that come down every single day. And I would also be in support of a single hauler solution, and I appreciate the gravity of the decision you may or may not have to make on this topic. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and welcome. Any other comments? We'll close to bring it back up to the Board. Thanks, everybody, for being here and your patient, patience. We will be discussing this at the next for sure meeting and maybe the next two meetings. This part of the job stinks. I mean, it's really difficult. We have spent so much time and resources, and at the end of the day, I will speak just for myself, I don't want to see any harm done to any local business. I, I get it, it's hard to, to sit up here and, you know, I think several of the people on the Board either have owned their own business or worked in a small business, and we get it, we do. I mean, but man, the lack of communication has been infuriating. When I'm sitting here until 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night, several nights a week, making calls back to residents, and I can't get an answer from the people I'm speaking on behalf of almost, it's frustrating. So, the only thing I'll say kind of in closing is, the main request that we've been getting on a daily basis, several today, are people asking us at the Township, whether it's ordinance enforcement, or my office, or the clerk's office, "What should you do? Should we got another bill from Oddjob? Should we pay it? Should we re-up with them?" We aren't here to give advice, but please read between the lines and even in their own letter, it's, doesn't sound necessarily like they're, I don't know if they're going to apply or not, and that's, that's going to be up to them. And I also want to remind you that we cannot get your refunds. We've had people asking us to assist in that. Yes, they did say on the record they would give refunds, they did tell us on the 18th when they met with us upstairs that they would give issue refunds, but we have heard a lot of people saying they were trying to get refunds and they can't get a response. That's, unfortunately, where our duty ends as your Township representatives, that's a private contract between you and a private company, and that's up to you. So, if we get any information as to how they will process those that we can share, we will certainly share that out through our social media pages and our website, but again, I'm just asking, please, to not come to the Township with those requests, because we can't help you. It's a private contract you have between you, yourself, and a private company. And then, just a couple of questions that did come out of the few public comments received. Based on everything that's going on with garbage in the Township, we did meet with all four haulers. Samantha Timko is my chief assistant, she's over there, and myself. We met with Oddjob, we met with GFL, we met with Waste Management, and we met with Advanced. And we asked them all the same questions, including Oddjob. Do you plan on continuing to do business in the Township? All four said yes. We did ask the question, just so it's, so people are aware, if you're interested, if we did, the Township did go the route of single hauler, would you bid on the contract? Three of the four said yes. Oddjob, we didn't get that far, we didn't really get an answer with them on that. So I would tell you that we will have at least, at least three companies that have told us that they will be renewing their permits. That's the other three companies. As it relates to the rates that are published on our website, it's become really difficult for the clerk's office and the supervisor's office, because we are getting lots of people calling, saying, "I've called and I've gotten different prices," and you publish. What we have told the garbage companies, the way our ordinance is currently written, it needs to be updated. The ordinance says that you, the companies will give us the rates that they will charge. What we have told the garbage companies, quite frankly, with all of you, is to give us the highest rate you will charge any or, any resident in our Township. That way, you're in compliance with the ordinance. So it's not the best place to shop rates when the new rates get published in 30 days on our website, or if they even do, because they probably will be really high, because otherwise, the garbage companies will, will be violating our ordinance if they charge anybody higher than that. So what I, my guess is, and we've already seen one come in, not officially, but it's a really high rate. It's a higher rate than you could call and get, but they're just filing our ordinance, which is outdated. The last thing I'll tell you is the Township Board does have an ad hoc committee in place that consists of Brian Burney, Mike Flood, and myself, that's been researching this issue for a couple of years now. We, the Township Board did hire an independent third-party company that is not affiliated with any garbage company, I want to be very clear about that, at a meeting last month called Resource Recycling Systems, Resource Recycling Systems, RRS. They're out of Ann Arbor, they do work all over the nor, all over North America for municipalities. They work for units of government all over the United States, Canada, and they have some clients in Mexico consulting on garbage. So we are trying to get all the information together to present a solution to the, to the residents of the Township, a long-term solution. That's all, I like comments. Mike, if you have something to add?
I'd like to kind of clarify this, Mark, the dates. This is where people get confused. Being on the Environmental Resource Committee for the last 10 years, the clerk's office always forwards us that committee, all the licensing and stuff, because we're supposed to be in charge of how the recycling is done in the Township. For the last 35 years, when the ordinance was wrote, written, the permit season runs from April 1st through March 31st. That's the calendar year, how, how it goes. All right. I have 2017, whoops, our, right? 2017's documents here, and 18, that the clerk's office provides our little committee. We usually get the report in April, April 17th for 2017, April 2nd for 2018. It has a list of the haulers here, how much they paid. Here's the key of the 15th. This is advantageous to the trash hauler. Every truck that they license, they have to pay $100 per truck. And just for example, last year, Advanced Disposal did 14 trucks, cost them $1,100. Green Life, 25 trucks, $1,250. Oddjob's, 11 trucks, $550. 45 trucks for Waste Management, $25. What it is, if you renew before the 15th, you only pay $50 instead of the $100 fee. And if you bring in a new truck in, then it's $75 if you're late after March 15th. Then after March 31st, you can, you can still get a permit for your truck, it's going to cost you $100. Those dates are for them to save money on their license fees. A hauler could come in, a new hauler could come in in July and say, "I want to start working in Orion Township," and go through the process, and we've, we've had that happen before. We had to put a moratorium on one hauler that was trying to get in, that's when we were having trouble before. So, those dates, don't get those dates mixed up. Those are to do mainly with the, to meet the legality, it's just like renewing your driver's license, but it would cost you more if you missed the dates. That's the key. And one last thing I want to say on Chris, is one thing, this is ad hoc committee that we've been on for years and years. The number one thing, when people talk about consolidating trash haulers, and it's a proven fact, when you see the other communities, there's 600 Townships in the Oakwood County that have done this. The cost, the cost savings to the residents. And everything we've heard back too, from all these other communities is, once they've done that, no one's clamored to say, "We want to go back to the old way." So these are all the variables that are going on, so. Just stay tuned and we'll keep working on it.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments from the Board? There was a motion to receive and file my, my report that I read into the record, which were the two letters that were sent from the attorney to Oddjob on behalf of the Township. Last thing, Mr. Leinbach, or anyone that knows Oddjob, the one thing that might help a lot of residents in the next month is if in fact that last paragraph is correct and they do not plan on renewing their license, it would be helpful for them to get that information out. So if anyone could ask them, we certainly will ask them, we'll follow up with an email and a phone call tomorrow to, to understand if that truly is their intent for the people that are looking to pay their bills going into the future, so that if they do know that they're not planning on continuing in Orion, that we can, that residents can know that without paying their bills, because I think we're going to, unfortunately, I don't think this is the end of this conversation. So, thank you. Motion was to receive and file by Schultz, supported by Flood, the report that I made, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That completes the pending business. We have a few, few reports to go through quickly here. First, the Burney report.
to go through quickly here. First, the Burney report. Our, every board meeting, police and fire report, that tells you our residents, what our police and fire departments were up to. You can see, see all this stuff on our website if you're interested. The highlights are a lot of times covered in the Lake Orion Review. Entertained a motion to receive and file. You can see, the good news is, there are tons of calls for service, and luckily, very few arrests. Most of our residents are in good behavior. Yes, Clerk Schultz. Do you have a hand up?
No.
Make a motion to receive and file the police and fire report.
I'll support the motion.
Okay. So, moved by Burney, supported by Flood. All in favor? Any comments on any of that stuff?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Bless you.
Bless you. Next report is the, or I'm sorry, the Strategic Communications Fourth Quarter Report. SCS is a consultant that the township utilizes for economic development efforts as well as legislative efforts. Their report is also attached in our board book. You can read it. It's five pages, kind of talks about what we've worked on in the past year with them. Clerk Schultz?
This is so good. Thank you very much for filing this. I move that we receive and file as presented, and I have one question.
I'll support the motion. I'll say hi to Bill out there.
Okay. Yes, Penny?
I just wanted to get a quick update on the vape ordinance, or the vape legislation that's supposed to be part of the tobacco, making it the same age as the tobacco is for minors not to use it. Can I just get a quick update?
Yes. The House Regulatory Reform Committee discussed the issue last week. That's Representative Weber from Rochester Hills is the chair of that committee. And there seems to be a dispute whether it should be regulated under the Tobacco Products Act or under, you know, its own vaping act. And it's not on the agenda this week, but I'll keep you informed as to the progress of that bill.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Gary Roberts is out of town this week, so he asked me to step in, but if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay.
Thanks for doing a great job you guys are doing for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, our MMRA financial report. This is our insurance, our group insurance with a lot of other municipalities. Motion to receive and file.
I'll move.
Support.
Flood, Stimo. Questions, comments, discussions, just nothing really out of the ordinary to report. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? One more report. This one's kind of cool. The building report for 2018. You can see that the building department had a very half-staff year. I don't know why they picked that picture. I'm just kidding. They picked a nice, beautiful, sunny, cloudy day, bright day, but it was some, some, anyway, this is a pretty cool report. Thanks to Dave Goodlow, building official, and his team, kind of talks a lot about the work they've done in the building department in 2018, and I kind of asked him to prepare this report for the board, and we'll highlight some of these numbers and some of these things in the state of the township on March 27th. I'm not going to go through it all right now. It's on our website today, if you want to look at it this weekend or this week. Right now, I'm looking for a motion. Yep, Flood, or I'm sorry, Stimo?
I'll support.
I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Donnie, with your comment.
Well, I do like this report, like the planning and zoning report too, but just a side note that, that the two subdivisions, Parkview and Bald Mountain, were slated to be finished this year, and that's why the permits have gone down this year versus last year. That was fast and furious.
It was. There's a big demand out there then.
Okay. Any other comments?
Excellent report.
Excellent report.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Public comment. Anybody want to talk to the board about anything your heart desires? That's really wide open. Yes, sir. Welcome. Just take your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Peak. And I'm here with my son, who's part of a student statesmanship institute, and they're very active in Lansing, and they get a chance to see government in action. They have mock legislatures and, you know, House of Representatives, as well as Senate, and they've got a judicial tract as well. Senator Kropsey, at the time, once referred to them as a, as a student army marching all over Lansing. And I'm pleased that he got a chance here today to see our township board in action. You know, I'm a customer of Odd Job, and I appreciate the low price, and I appreciate the weather that we have had. However, listening to the board, we, we see the frustration. We see the problem. And our companies, if they're not responsive to the customers, and we see that in our own Keatington subdivision chat boards, right, then we think that what you asked for was completely reasonable, and I thank the township board for their action. And we have a different expectation in the business world today, and that is, you need to be responsive to your customers. And to that end, you know, we will continue to support the board here, and we appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Peak. And what's your son's name?
This is Samuel Nathan.
Samuel Nathan. Nice. Thanks for coming. How are you, are you, how old are you, Samuel?
17.
Next year, you could run for township board.
There you go.
Precinct delegate, too.
And precinct delegate as well. It's a great way to get involved. And I do know, I love the SSI program. I've, five years in a row, I've got to be a part of that. I know the clerk has been a part of it. I know Donnie, the treasurer, has been a part of it. I don't know if anybody else has, but it's a great, awesome program to kind of teach students about legislature and how laws are made and all that good stuff. You might learn about it and realize you never want to be a part of it too, which is okay. Thanks for being here. Any other public comment? Come on. Yep?
Okay, I want to come back up. Now, as an Orion resident, though, Megan Zalone, 820 Merritt Avenue, and I thank you to Mr. Burnett for requesting that Odd Job kind of send something out to the public. It was disappointing that someone wasn't able to be here from Odd Job today. I understand, you know, under circumstances, but I wish that someone was able to be here. I think that just shows kind of ethic and character, and it would have been nice, even despite issues that they're going through, just to have that presence here. But with that being said, I know you're requesting that they send something out to the public if they are going to have this finalization for March 31st, and I would have liked that, because I already submitted everything and my payment through May. So if I'm out of things, that's fine. You know, lesson learned. I'm not going to worry about it, but I think that communication is everything. It talks about, you know, just having that communication with public would have been really great, even if they are going through struggles. I think some things improved in our neck of the woods, just with pickup, but that would have just been great to know. So hopefully, if they don't continue, just a lesson for the future that they try to improve their communication with the public. But if not, and if we do go through to one hauler in the community, I just request that the board really look at environmental standards for that new company, if we do go to one, and just to ensure that, because I hate every single time I drive on M24, and I'm driving past that landfill, and I just try to think, man, I do want to really try to recycle more and more. So if we do go to one company, really looking at their recycling standards, because that's just something I don't want to contribute to, just additional trash in those landfills. So, thank you.
Good comments. Thank you. And thanks again for your presentation and what you do. Any other comments from the public? We will bring it up to the board, and we'll start with Clerk Schultz tonight.
Megan, it was so good to have you here tonight and get the word out. It's on our website. People can find out more information, but definitely contact Megan. It's just really a good support for our youth, and they need it. They need to know that there's options. And Mr. Peak has 12 kids, correct? Are they all a part of this program?
Sorry?
Were they all a part of the program? Or are they moving up in the ranks?
Several of them have.
That's pretty exciting. I'm glad that you guys are here tonight. Thank you. Odd Job, we, I'm glad that they were able to give us somewhat of a report, Chris. I know that this will be on the agenda for next board meeting. People may be interested in coming. The board will be making the decision on all of our trash haulers. So it's important that you stay tuned to that. Also, I want to thank North Oakland Community Coalition. They provided all of the board of trustees tonight. Just a little reminder with some M&amp;M's. It was kind of a nice little gimmick to get your attention, but North Oakland Community Coalition is working with the Students Against Substance Abuse at the high school. There's March Mondays and Marijuana Facts. That's our focus. I do serve on that board of the coalitions. The Lake Orion High School students look for the NOCC's Marijuana Facts each Monday in March in the Lake Orion High School Commons and on our website. At the end of the month, you'll also, students want to have the opportunity to complete the survey about the facts that you learned and be entered to win the Students Against Substance Abuse March giveaways. North Oakland Community Coalition is working really hard to have a presence in all of our schools. I know Julia can tell you, they're out there, and they're making sure that we get preventative information to the students, so that we don't have to provide those recovery resources. We want to see them refrain from drug misuse. So that's a, one, one thing you're going to all want to take a look at. You've got the flyer in front of you. It's just a lot of great information. Pass it on when you're done with it. Let's spread the word. And then the group that was here during public comment, I'm so proud of them, the Young Life Lake Orion Fire at 5K is May 4th at Friendship Park at 8:00 a.m. You can still register. There's plenty of time to get registered. There's a small race, I think it's a one mile, and then the 5K for everyone, and it is out at our Friendship Park. This group, Young Life, is starting out fresh here in the community. We did hold a fundraiser at Camp Agawam in November, and it was very well-attended, and I'm really excited about this opportunity. So look for more of them, and I think you'll see them at some more of our board meetings. And that's all the comments that I have.
Thank you, Clerk Schultz. Ms. Dalrymple?
I also wanted to say thank you again for all the information tonight on the mobile crisis team, and also, this magnet is fantastic, because I will take it to school tomorrow and put it on my dry erase board, and let students know that it's something else that they should take a picture of, that in case they need it, that they have some other ways to contact people and to get in touch when they need that. And the other thing is, just a DCA update quickly, is that we are headed to Detroit this weekend for our State Career Development Conference. And so we have 26 high school students from Lake Orion who will be competing this weekend. If they win this weekend, then that means they will get the chance to move on, or they will move on, to the international competition, which is in Orlando this year, at the end of April, beginning of May. And that's with 16,000 high school students from across the world will compete at that conference. So we're really excited for that.
Thanks, Julia. John?
Someday, spring will come.
Yes.
Winter will end. So we're looking forward to that. With that, you know, it's been a tough winter as far as like road conditions go. It just seems like a lot of rain, and it gets cold, and it gets slippery. I just ask people, maybe, especially see it on our main roads, slow down a little bit. I mean, holy mackerel. I feel bad, because it seems like, especially like on the main roads, like I said, 24 especially, every week, we're knocking down signs, because somebody's sliding through. It's like, slow down. I mean, yeah, it's going to be a little slippery sometimes, you know? Common sense, you know? It's amazing. And then, if you're not during rush hour, you try to go up and down there, nobody drives the speed limit, and that's kind of unnerving if you're, when someone's driving right up behind you, especially when it's a little slippery like this. It's kind of like, let's calm down, people. Slow down. Take a little extra time to get there, to get there in one piece would really be helpful. So, anyway, I guess that's just my thing at the moment with this extended winter, kind of slow down a little bit around here.
Thank you, John. Donnie?
The last day to collect taxes was the February 28th, and now taxes are payable at the county. So if you need a tax bill, we can provide it, but then they have to be paid at the county. And I just, just want to shout out for the Lions. They have their Night of the Races at the Knights of Columbus on the 30th of March, and they're just such a great charitable organization for Orion. So if you're able to go, please, it's on their website.
Thank you. Mike?
Let's talk garbage.
Oh, dear.
I used to process this stuff for 20 years, the John and Motors, into our boilers, and we saved a million dollars a year on coal. It was a great, great venue. To answer the young lady's question there about recycling, what we found out is that most of these folks who have gone to the single hauler, they were like between 12 and 15% on their recycling. It's over to 80% of people get more into recycling. I know that's been quite an issue with the past governor. He tried to do something with that. I don't know the legislation, you know, he tried to get funding for it, and kind of didn't go anywhere, but. And lastly, if you get a chance, I see Jim Newell sitting back there. If you get the ORN Review, I've been a lifelong resident here, and I support them. I'm going to give them a, I'm going to give them a shout out, because you, everything local is always in there. You do all the great local stuff for our schools, and for the government and everything. It's very cheap, too. There was an article in there by a lady, I can't remember her name now. She did a great bit on the roundabouts on Balden Road, and it's a little satire, but I'll tell you what, it was perfect. So if you get a chance to read the opinion pages this last week, it was awesome. And I'm sorry for the lady, I couldn't, I gave her a name, but.
Brenda Waldrop.
Brenda Walter. Excellent article. You need to read it. And everything she says in there is true. That's it.
Everything in the Lake Orion Review is always true.
It's not like the chat room. It's true.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Burney?
All right, chamber updates. March 7th is our next Chamber Luncheon, catered by the Mediterranean Grill. March 19th is the first-ever Women in Business Conference, featuring Angela Moore, President of the Body Principal, Carrie Birmingham, former anchor at Fox 2 News, Susan Kruger, President and CEO of SOAR Learning, Inc., and Kimberly Allen, Chief Experience Officer of Something Fabulous. So the tickets are 45 bucks. Check it out. It's, I've heard from Kim, the Executive Director, that tickets are going fast, and it's a new initiative for the chamber, so something everyone should check out. And April 16th is the 2019 membership orientation, and believe it or not, July 15th is the golf outing for the chamber. So put all those dates in your calendar, and make sure you get there if you can. Oh, and then, last but not least, new this year, the Healthy Body, Healthy Mind Expo is going to be partnering up with Green Up Event at the Orion Center. So it's on the same day, and that's April 27th. So that's the change. We usually do that, well, the Green Up is at Camp Agawam, and Healthy Body, Healthy Mind was at Walden. So now they're combining, so hopefully, it's an even bigger event for both of them. So all good dates to put in your calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. I thought for sure someone, one of you was going to reference Saturday night.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I figured you would.
Oh, look at that. So we had an awesome time at the 35th Annual Firefighters Association Ball, Saturday at Pinkerton Country Club. Mr. Brian Burney is a proud owner. Did you hang it up on the wall yet?
I don't know how to. Honestly, I feel like I'm going to hurt somebody, so.
That American flag is made out of fire hose that was retired, and Chris Hagan there, who's our lieutenant, who chaired the event, phenomenal event, sellout crowd. That's the group. That's a blurry picture, but that's the group of gentlemen that kind of chaired the event. But those are all full-time firefighters with the Orion Township Fire Department. And it was a great time, sellout. We got to recognize again our firefighter of the year, our TRA. And then, look at that crew of. That was on the dance floor. All those township employees are dancing, and John was there, but I didn't get him on the dance floor, so we pulled as many people as we could. But it was great to see a lot of the township team out supporting firefighters. I apologize for the people with the red eyes, but it was a great time. And then, on a more somber note, I do want to recognize the passing of Mr. Jim Sherman, Sr. I talked to Jim Sherman, Jr. today on the phone. Jim passed at 92. His heart was for our communities, because he was the Oxford Leader in the Orion Review and the Clarkston News. Is there one more, Jim? Ortonville, we don't care about. I'm kidding. But he always, Jim's jottings, you know, if you were the review, you could always, his very good, fun, sometimes dry sense of humor. So condolences to the whole Lake Orion Review family on the passing of Mr. Sherman. I do want to let the board know a couple of quick things. One, congrats, Julia, to your DCA team, and somehow, I'm going to be down there judging on Saturday morning, the competition, because she asked me to. Anybody else going, anybody else going down to Detroit from this board?
No.
Oh, you guys have got lucky.
Next year. Next year.
Next year.